Hey, good evening everyone and welcome to the Milani Maoka Long Island Valley Neighborhood Board 35 regular meeting. Tuesday, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I call this meeting to order. And this time ask Scout BSA Troop Six Six Four to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Please rise for the presentation of the colors. Troop attention, color guard attention, color guard forward march. Mark time, march. Right wheel, march. Mark time, march. Ready, halt. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. So I sleep. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without borders, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Be to- Color guard forward, march. Mark time, march. Ready, halt. Color guard center face. Turn, turn to the door. There's the door on your right. And then walk out. Oh, sorry, you may be seated.
All right, thank you, Troop Six Six Four. Okay, moving on to meeting decorum, Vice Chair Tom Shiro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, everyone. On behalf of Chair Hazama and your members of your Milani Maoka and Long Island uh Valley Neighborhood Board, um in terms of meeting decorum, we welcome again everybody's feedback input. Uh but we just ask that if you're wanting to speak, that you raise your hand, be recognized by the chair, and then he will guide you up to the microphone. Uh for those joining us virtually, again, same thing, just signal and the chair will uh dress uh uh for you when to speak. And last, we just ask that, if possible, to limit your comments to about three minutes or less, so we can hear everybody's feedback. Uh thank you very much. Uh back to you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. We'll move on to our monthly reports. The Honolulu Fire Department.
Hi, good evening. Firefighter Kenton Wong, Milani Maoka Fire Station. Um from last month, Board Chair Dean Hazama asked how to obtain a fire report for the two thousand twenty-three Maoka Fire. Uh anybody on the board may contact the HFD Public Affairs and Media Liaison who is handling the Neighborhood Board program. You may email them at hfdnhb@hongkong.gov. Also, any member of the public may request an incident report by going to the HFD website, fire.honolulu.gov, and there's a requests tab. For the month of August, we had five activated alarms, thirty-three medical alarms, one motor vehicle collision, and two hazardous materials incidences. Your safety tip of the month is to please move over for emergency vehicles. There is a move over law asking motorists to please slow down, make a lane change when safety do so. And emergency vehicles will include police, fire, EMS, ocean safety, as well as your freeway service patrol and tow trucks. Are there any questions?
Any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department this evening? Anyone online? So, if I understand you correctly, the report is available and has to be requested by the public?
Yes, the public would like to request it, yes.
Oh, okay. Any reason why you can't present it to the Neighborhood Board or?
Was, oh, was that you what you would have liked? Are you requesting the report to be presented at next month?
Yeah, I mean, or you could just forward the, forward us the report, like you can't sit out with anybody.
Okay, I will, um.
You can probably email it to your neighborhood assistant.
Okay, I will.
You can either do that or go to the mayor's office and send it to our mayor's department. They'll get it.
I'm sure.
Okay, thank you. The Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, good evening, Lieutenant Vice Admiral Wahihua, please stand. Uh, from the Department, um reporting for the month of September, uh thus far. We've had uh one assault case, uh no burglaries to report, no robberies. Uh we had two fire break-ins and two hundred forty-five calls per service. Um I do want to invite um all of you guys and the public to attend our uh Meet the Major. So we have our um Acting Major Joe Gonzalez, who's in charge of Milani uh Wahihua and North Shore, that that district of the Honolulu Police Department. It's gonna be on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, from ten thirty to eleven thirty AM at Sunset Beach Rec Center, uh fifty-nine, five forty, Cape Codemare Highway. Uh we try to do one for each area, uh so one Milani, one in Wahihua, one in uh North Shore. But for now, we're just doing that North Shore, and we'll get to you folks, but if you guys want to attend, everyone, that that's fine. Um the other thing I wanted to invite everyone to is the Career Fair, the Honolulu Police Department Recruitment and Career Fair. That one is gonna be at the Kamakana Shopping Center. It's gonna be on Friday, this coming Friday, from four PM to eight PM. Um and it's gonna have a lot of our different divisions, different units in the Police Department that uh everyone can uh check on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the Honolulu Police Department? Teresa.
Hi there. Um as I was driving in uh this evening, I noticed that there's uh light board signage on Ina Makua with regards to no parking on Ina Makua, no school drop-offs and pickups along that area. Um I recently went to the cop, uh coffee with a cop over at Kane Street Cafe in Wahihua the other day. And um that was part of the conversation. I would like to think that might have come from some of the feedback that's been coming from the community that that will help our Milani Maoka elementary parents to understand that they cannot park on the street. Is that correct?
Yes, uh in fact, we just got another um request to check Milani Middle. Yes, so it's like we mentioned the last time, it's uh every school is requesting for it, so we're trying to get to each school as best we can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the Honolulu Police Department? Anyone online?
All right, thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you so much.
We do not have a border water supply with us this evening?
She did upload the report on our Google Drive.
Uh so we'll move on to our military representative Colonel.
Good evening, Board. Uh this is from Lander, one thirty, Attention Brigade. Uh so as I mentioned last month, um there's gonna be an uptick in in training here uh come October uh with the JPMRC. I left some uh some informationals on the on the table over there. Uh but for the formal training uh status, uh the remainder of September, we have uh the multi-purpose range complex live-fire exercises uh from seventeen to the nineteenth. And those will be roughly eight AM to eleven PM, and then five AM, basically, put route. Okay, um and then um uh on the twenty-first, twenty-third through twenty-seventh, uh at the East Range, there'll be some uh range and jungle tactics, uh small arms blank fire from about six AM to six PM, daytime operation. And then on the nineteenth, we have uh at the East Range, some aviation training, uh daytime. Uh that's really all I have for this month. Um and then, uh as always, our concern line is at eight oh eight seven eight seven uh one five two eight. There's any questions?
Need question?
Not scared.
Colonel, you have?
Yes, sir.
Uh just a question. I know you'd mentioned the live-fire exercises, which I know are all at Schofield, but is there gonna be any type of training on east range, grenade simulators, things that are gonna make a lot of noise that the residents should be aware of?
Likely during JPMRC, so in in October. And it's all in the in the, it should should be in the informational. Um we'll be using uh ETA on the Big Island, Dillingham, Aho Kuhu, uh Waialoa, HMR, Schofield, East Range, South Range. So it's all gonna be, so very likely that there could be some some grenade simulators and louder bangs.
Okay, and that period again is, what are the dates again?
It is yeah, the seventh through the sixteenth, seven through the sixteenth.
Oh, October, okay, great, thank.
But the traffic will probably be worse during periods before and after people are coming.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next up under Board Business, we have the presentation from the Army Boss Program, Specialist Morgan Creasy.
Hi, good evening. I'm Specialist Creasy. I'm the president for the Boss Program. For those of you who don't know, the Boss Program is better opportunities for single soldiers. With that, one of our main pillars, it's gonna be community service. So a lot of our events are specific to single soldiers, but when it comes to our volunteer activities, that's open to everyone, the more the merrier, always. Um with that, we are actually number one in the whole Army for community service, and a lot of those opportunities are Hawaii-specific. So we have some really great ones here, and we'll start out, um our first opportunity that we do, we have this at least twice a month, every month. All right, we go to the next slide. There we go, yeah. We have this at least twice every month. This is Access Surf. If you don't know about this program, it's really great to get involved in. It's for those that have physical or cognitive disabilities. And a lot of these people, they don't even get to get in the water, even though we live in an island, they can't even get in the water without that extra assistance, whether it's a special wheelchair or certain equipment to help them on the surfboard. This here, you can just see how big some of the events are, um especially on Saturdays. Can go to the next slide. So I'll go over a couple of the different positions that we get to do. Um on the left here, that's us carrying somebody into the water. Sometimes the wake is a little bit too much. It's called a royal carry, and it really just makes participants feel so special. Um on the right, we do also have uh positions for people if they don't feel completely comfortable in the water. So here, we'll always man the tent. You'll always see the boss shirts over there of people giving out here, and then whenever we get it back, we'll be renting it off. Can you go ahead and go to the next one? And then this is just another royal carry. So yeah, again, people that can't get into the water, um this is a great opportunity. Everybody gets so much joy out of this. It's so many of my core memories here in Hawaii have been made access surf. You can go to the next one. Royal carry, you can go again. And then this shows you how big the the break can be, and this is exactly why sometimes we can't always use those wheelchairs. So you can kind of see the special chair that's in there, um but sometimes it's just a little too dangerous, so we actually get to lift them and carry them into the water again. That just shows that not everybody can go out to the beach and just get in the water. Sometimes it literally takes a whole army or whole community. You can go to the next one. And then again, this is us giving out shirts. So there's so many different stations and ways for us to get involved, whether you're comfortable in the water or if you don't want to get in the water, um beach safety, handing out jerseys, there's something there for everyone. And then they also provide food. We'll give out food to the fans. We go to the next one. This here, we actually have a two-mile portion out towards North Shore that we've adopted on Farrington Highway. And rain or shine, we're gonna be out there cleaning up our our port, our part of the highway. Um you can go ahead and scroll down. And then you can see, we're always out there. We do this, um if not every month, definitely every other month, and then we'll rotate this with um our beach cleanups. You go down again. And then you see all these smiles. We honestly have so much fun with these adopt-a-highways, and it's a great way um for us to get engaged in the community. We always have people going down the highway. If they don't stop, they'll blow the horn. You'll see shockers out the window. There's just so much community truly involved with this event. You go down. Here is where you start our beach cleanups. We go all across the island. Sometimes we'll pair up with other programs as well. Um so if you do know of a beach that really needs our help, you can always let us know, and we'd be happy to go out there. You can scroll down again. And then again, you just see big smiles on everyone's faces. We we really do, we always have great turnouts for the beach cleanups and adopt-a-highway. We truly, we truly have so many great volunteers that come out to this. You go ahead and scroll. This is actually coming up this month. If you haven't heard of it, it's our Gold Star Mother and Family Ceremony. So that's for the the families that paid the ultimate sacrifice, and they walk up the stairs with a punch bowl. Some families, they actually can't walk up the stairs themselves, so you get to assist them or even carry the foods. That right there, like that gets you in the heart. Um I got to help carry up the banner last year, and it was just so touching. Like some of the things that we get to do here in Hawaii with the Boss Program is an absolute core memory. You you can't replace those. So we have that coming up again this year. But this um is actually with the hospice program. So specific to hospice, they do have a veterans program. And as soon as we're notified, it's literally within a couple days that we have to go out. So these are very last minute. They don't usually make it on our calendar, but as soon as we find out and we're notified, we always have a couple of soldiers that are ready in their dress uniform and want to head out. So this is truly, if you slide down one more, this is truly just those moments where we get to surround them with camaraderie and really honor what they did with their life. There, yeah, the the hospice program is truly touching as well. You can go to the next one. We also um volunteer with Fisher House. If you don't know what Fisher House is, that's an Army program, especially here in Hawaii. It's very important. Um when people come out, it can be very, very expensive to have those hotels and stuff paid for. But if a family member is going through cancer treatment, any kind of major surgery, pregnancy, they can actually come to these facilities and their family can stay with them. It's a very, very nice hotel, essentially. Mostly, we do um like maintenance and gardening and landscape to get those ready for the for patients. You go to the next one. And then also during Thanksgiving, on that day, we volunteer any way we can, anywhere we can, um to help um make those meals happen for everyone. That's what we'll be doing this year as well. You can go to the next one. And then this is during Christmas. You can go ahead and just scroll to the last one. This is during Christmas. We're just out in the community. We didn't really want to sell anything at Christmas. Instead, we just wanted to try out tattoos, and the kids absolutely loved it. It was probably the best thing that we truly could have done. But yeah, we're out here in Hawaii. We honestly, any way that we can, we want to get engaged with the community. So if anybody has any kind of community service opportunities that you know of, please let us know. We'd love to get them, get them on calendar. Questions?
Any questions for, go ahead, Teresa.
Is there a contact phone number or how does the organization get in touch with you?
Steven? Thank you for your presentation. How many participants do you have in your program?
So as of right now, we have eighty-four hundred single soldiers. And then as far as volunteers, we're seeing, it really depends on how many events we have. We do put it in an EXUM every single month of works, and we're usually seeing around eight hundred to a thousand volunteers come out.
You have a website? Do you, thank you very much. Do you have a website?
We do not have a website specifically. We do have a Facebook page. So everything that we do, we post on the Hawaii Facebook page, and then as far as the EXUMs and reporting our numbers and stuff, those go up to higher command, but if you guys ever want to have those for your report, I could I could definitely send them to you.
Yeah, what's the name of the page on on Facebook?
Hawaii Boss Program.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anyone online? Again, thank you for your presentation, but I remember seeing something on Garrison AAO that somehow you guys won some kind of award, or you guys are like the number one boss program in the Army, Department of Army, is that right?
Yes, sir. We are the number one boss program in the Army. That was awarded in June, and we would like to keep that. We're going to keep that.
Twenty-four.
Yes, so for, yeah, for the whole Army, we are number one, and a lot of those, again, a lot of those opportunities are specific to Hawaii, and we're just so fortunate.
Okay. Um, we can probably, we can probably do something next month. I'll speak for our recognition chair. She'll do something for you. Um, any other questions? Thank you again for your service, and you know, it's important to get connected to the community. Uh I think it was important for you guys to come on and really promote this program, because a lot of people don't know what you guys are doing. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to residents' concerns. Are there any residents or community concerns this evening? Anyone online? Hearing none, we'll move on to our elected officials' report. Uh Office of Governor, anybody online? What was she putting there, Teresa? Uh Congressman Ed Case. Okay, uh Office of Mayor Rick Blanziardi, carry on.
Hi, I'm-
Hi, Carrie, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Chair, um board members, um community members. Carrie Castle. I'm the uh Deputy Director with the Budget and Fiscal Services Department, representing Mayor Blanziardi this evening. So the mayor's September newsletter is available online now, and I will share the link uh in the chat. But one of the items that I wanted to highlight was that the city recently installed thirty new security cameras in the Chinatown area, and this has been a decades-long overhaul of the security camera network. Eventually, there will be sixty cameras that are installed in total uh with the, you know, idea that we we want to make Chinatown a safe place for those that not only live near nearby, but also those that um venture to Chinatown for its many, you know, uh features, like new restaurants. There's so much happening down in Chinatown. So that's uh that initiative has been completed with more to come. Um moving on to our issues from last month. Um so regarding the first issue on the repaving of the Milani Maoka Streets. Um so DDC reported that uh the contractor plans to start concrete work next month, and then repaving will follow. An item number two, uh regarding sidewalks uplifting along uh May May Hill Street. So um our our Department of Facilities Maintenance has reported that the Wahia Wahihawa yard uh received the state PUC clearance for the underground utilities um this morning. And they are responsible for then the Milani, Milani Maoka area, and will start the sidewalk reconstruction project uh for next week. Uh with, first of all, demolition of the uplifted sidewalk areas to that expose the tree roots. And then uh DPR, Department of um Parks and Recreation, along with the Urban Forestry Division, will follow the Wahihawa crew with trimming and pruning of the roots that are uplifting the sidewalks and adjusting the tree canopies to balance the tree. Um the Pro City Eva Corporation Yard um will be forming and reconstructing the sidewalks upon completion of the tree roots. Regarding the third item, which is the Milani Middle School J Building Parking Lot. Um so our Department of Parks and Recreation, um like, I guess, to our understanding, uh the Milani Middle School Parking Lot is not currently open on the weekends. So the Department of Education and the Parks and Rec are working on a memorandum of agreement for the joint use of the parking lot for park permit users during the weekends, and they're determining the best arrangement for unlocking and locking of the parking lot gate. Um I'm here to answer any questions?
Any questions for the mayor's office this evening? Yeah, oh, go ahead.
I have um two items that came up um in this last month. Um one I noticed, um over at the Milani Maoka Parking Ride, it looks like they put the lamppost, the new, they replaced the lamppost. Um unfortunately, I think the the schematics of the the tire stoppers from the distance of the lamppost or anything in that grassy area between each of the parking stalls, it's too close. So vehicles are hitting the lampposts. So the new one is kind of tilted in an awkward angle because it got hit several times, it looks like. Um but even for me, like I I I have reverse cameras, so I can clearly see the post. But for older vehicles that don't have that, even a short vehicle, their bumper area went way over the um tire stopper. So I don't know if someone can go back out and 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 measure, um because then it would make the the um stall shorter, obviously. But where the lampposts are, I did see one get hit um by an older vehicle. Um no fault of their own, you can't see it because it's dark, um because the lights go off early still when it's dark in the morning. Um so I think that's something that needs to be addressed, because if your lamppost is too close to the the tire stopper and I hit it, to me, that's the city's responsibility to fix my car. But, you know, we can agree to disagree, but maybe if we can get that on, and I'll also talk to um uh address that with Councilmember's office. The other one would be the Chevron signage that was installed December twenty twenty-three over on We Kaua Street at that bend in front of Trinity Church. Um several of this city signs have been already hit and taken out of the ground. Um the last one was in June where the the church's fence again was demolished. Um so the church did reach out to me again, um but I noticed that they put signs back up, but it's three of the Chevron signs on one pole. They did not replace any of the other poles, so I don't know if that's in the works to replace the poles. Um but I I I'm not I I guess I'm looking at it as the city should now be seeing the effects of that turn at twenty-five miles per hour with no flashing lights or anything else, how much the city is now having to pay out of pocket to replace all of their property. So I think it might be worth another traffic survey and study that maybe we could get a yellow flashing light um in that area um based off of um fire hydrants that have had to be replaced in the last six months, as well as the city signs and Trinity Church's um claims as well. And I'm happy to connect Trinity Church Pastor Kimora with anyone that needs to have those uh documentations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mayor's office? Run online. Okay, Carrie, a couple things. So I'm assuming the concrete work prior to the road paving has to do with either sidewalks or I guess the burns that are on the side of the road, is that correct?
Yeah, I I would say so, yes.
And then the the second thing is, all that work that you described regarding the tree rooting and the sidewalk thing, that is on Mahiul Street.
Um so yeah, that that was the indication. Is is that not correct? I mean, that was the issue.
Well, a little worried because I I see the markings on the sidewalk on Mahiula Drive. I'm I'm sorry, Mahiula Parkway. I don't see any sidewalk markings on Mahiul Street. But normally, they mark, I guess your crews will mark the sidewalk, and then they'll go in and start planning the the mission to the other work.
Hmm, okay.
You may want to check to make sure that they have Mahiul Street identified.
They they are-
And I'm not saying that, I'm not, I'm not- And I'm not saying that, I'm not, I'm not saying that Mahewula, you know, Parkway sidewalk areas that are marked shouldn't be there. Um, they may be marked by your road repaving contractor and not your, I guess, your EFM group.
Okay, so.
Just to get a check on that.
Yeah, so Chair, um, my, uh, our notes indicate that, uh, DPP identified the correct location as Mahewa Street between Koalani Drive and Ohi Street and also between Ohi Street and Le Hua, Le Hua Drive.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Council District Eight, Council Member Okimoto's office.
Hi, good, good evening. Uh, this is Aaron with the, uh, uh, Office of, uh, Council Member Okimoto. Uh, apologize, my, uh, my, I'm having some video problems, uh, this evening. Um, wanted to just touch base, um, a little more detail on the resurfacing project. I know Jamie, uh, was here last month or, or last time you guys met. Uh, the Phase Twenty-Four B, uh, has the notice to proceed for construction, uh, for next year. Uh, pending, uh, it's supposed to begin the first quarter of twenty twenty-five uh, and be completed by the first quarter of twenty twenty-six. And Phase Twenty-Four C is currently in the planning and design phase uh, with the solicitation for bids, uh, in the fourth quarter of this year. Um, if anyone, uh, I heard you say something about the, uh, the, uh, church over there, uh, Trinity Church, uh, if you'd like to email me, my email is, uh, A A R O N dot W I L S O N at honolulu.gov and, um, I'm happy to speak with you as well about any, any problems you're having over there to see if we can get some more, um, either tra- traffic calming measures or another traffic study for you. Uh, the council member's, uh, Resolution Twenty-Four Dash One Nine Nine passed. Um, it's, uh, during last meeting, it'll be sent over to the state legislators. Uh, the resolution's calling on the, uh, state legis- state legislators to clarify and, uh, strengthen the Hawaii laws relating to electric bicycles and e-bikes. Uh, we had Bill Forty, Forty-One also pass out of full council. Uh, it'll be heading to its final committee later this month. Uh, it enhances the current city animal outreach programs. Uh, the bill will move the current Neuter Now program to the Department of Customs, Customer Services. On the last bill, uh, Bill Thirty-Nine, uh, passed its second reading and that relates to the, the building permits, uh, which will remove the affidavit requirements for individuals and businesses applying for certain building permits. Uh, so we're trying to, uh, uh, remove some of that red tape that you guys are seeing. Uh, that should be it for me. If anyone has any questions?
Any questions for Council Member Okimoto's office? Anyone online?
Yeah, um, I have a question. In the repaving contract, whose responsibility is it to notify and communicate with the residents? Is it the contractor or is it with, with the city?
I'd have to get that, that, that information to you. Uh, typically, uh, people would call the, call the office and I, you know, could get that information and just give it to them then. I don't know whose actual responsibility is, but I have no problem sharing that as long as it's, uh, you know, shareable.
But I'm, I'm more concerned about, uh, all the sacks on the private street that you guys need access to. Whose responsibility to notify the residents, like, they have to move their cars or what, the, the street's going to be inaccessible, et cetera? Is that in the contract for the contractor or is that somebody else's job?
I, I don't have that information. I can get that for you. Most likely that would be on the city, uh, but I'd, I'd have to, uh, check, check on that for you.
Okay, yeah, let us know so we can get our, our residents know too, so that it's not like a surprise to anybody.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Council District Two, Council Member Matt Wires Office.
Chair, can you guys hear me?
I have to appreciate you, but yeah.
Okay, hold on. How about now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's good, Kelly.
Okay, great. Um, good evening Chair and members of the board, Kelly Anaya from Matt Wires Office. Um, just a couple of things. Um, Council Member was honored to join, um, the mayor a couple of weeks ago with, um, his fellow council colleagues as well as first responders and city officials for his nine eleven remembrance walk. Um, also, uh, Bill Forty-Six wanted to bring to your attention, um, Bill Forty-Six was introduced by Chair Waters and Council Member Cordero. Um, this would aim to impose a tax on vacant homes, um, that remain vacant for more than six months out of the year. Um, this initiative would seek to discourage, uh, real estate speculation, land banking, and encourage the use of vacant properties to address, um, some of Oahu's housing needs. Uh, currently, this bill has been postponed, but the, um, committee, Council Member's, uh, committee is looking to get more input from the communities. So I'll put, um, Council Member's email as well as my email into the chat and, um, please, uh, be sure to spread the word to get your input in regarding this, um, kind of important measure. Um, this next, uh, hearing for this will be on September twenty-fifth in Council Members Housing Sustainability and Health Committee. Um, oh, and then for Teresa, um, and, uh, Director Castle, as well as, um, Aaron from Council Member Okimoto's Office. Um, our office is actually working on that We Kow Street. Teresa, I'm sure you're frustrated because I still have no updates from, uh, DTS. Um, like I mentioned at the last meeting, I did ask for them to see if they could expedite the traffic study again, especially, um, with the most recent, uh, you know, I guess the, that accident. I'm assuming that was the most recent and there hasn't been any others, but I still have not heard back from DTS as far as, um, where they are with, you know, expediting that traffic study. So I do appreciate your patience and, um, I'm sorry if I misunderstood, but it sounded like you said they put three of the Chevron signs on one post. Is that correct? Because that sounds kind, that sounds kind of odd.
That was the lone standing sign that remained. And so they put three of those signs in the middle of the sign. Um, I will scroll to, um, the photo.
Okay, okay, that, yeah, that's kind of embarrassing, but, um, thank you. Thank you. Um, um, that's all I have, uh, for tonight. If anyone has any questions here, Council Member, I can take them back.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Any questions for Council Member Wires Office this evening? Anyone online?
Well, Chair Hazama, uh, this is Carrie.
Yeah, go ahead, Carrie.
Well, Kelly, uh, let me see if I can help you with that, you know, in terms of contacting DTS.
Okay, I can go ahead and, um, send you the information that I have and maybe you can kind of go from there.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa, I just wanted to, um, share my appreciation with, um, Council Member Wires Office and Kelly specifically. Um, I know that the, uh, property owner or, um, Trinity Church, um, has CC'd me on some of the emails because they're, they're kind of at wit's end at this point. Um, and so I appreciate all the, the extra work that's going into, um, from, especially from Kelly following up with everyone. So I just want to make sure that it's on record that they have been following up over the last several months, once that email came, uh, directly from Trinity Church. So I know it's a, it's, it's going to take a while, but I, I know that you folks are working on it, including, uh, mayor's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Appreciate your support. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to, um, State Senator District Seventeen, Senator De La Cruz is off. Anybody on?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening Chair, members of the board. I'm Jonah Uihara from Senator De La Cruz's office. Um, for this report, the Pacific Housing Development Corporation has been selected to develop the Mililani Teacher Housing Project. Next steps include negotiations between the developer and the School Facilities Authority, SFA. The site for the project is still under negotiations. And if agricultural space is selected, a new ag space must be created before the current one is cleared. This ensures the ag program is not affected. Lastly, Senator De La Cruz is pushing the developer and SFA to engage with the community to ensure the community input and voices are heard. A short report this go around, open for questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Senator De La Cruz?
Sure. Hi, Stephen Melendez here. I have a couple of questions for you on the development. Now, it's going to be on the property of Mililani High School, correct?
Correct.
There's going to be a hundred and nine units?
Yes, about.
And they're looking at taking over the property that's currently, um, egg, if you will. It's a, uh, like court of virtual area, correct?
Correct.
Where are they going to put the parking?
That's a, that's a great question. I will have to follow up on that one.
Thank you. When you get that, if there's a sketch available, do email that to, uh, our, David Rissister, Art Haji, uh, Chair Hazama, please, maybe share with us. We'll share with the student. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Yep, you're welcome. Thank you.
Any other question? So I know I have one, so I don't know if anything has been worked out yet, but who, what is the criteria for a teacher to get housing? Or a unit in this development?
Oh, that's a really good question. Uh, I will have to take that one back to Senator De La Cruz's office as well.
Okay, I mean, if they have, if they're still working on it, that's fine, but I, I would imagine that, um, you know, we probably offer units to teachers that are in, um, I guess hard-to-fill positions or maybe serving in areas and have a lot of vacancies for teacher that kind of help them out. I think that's the whole intent of the program, right?
Right.
Okay, but yeah, thank you. We appreciate your report this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to House Representative, House District Thirty-Eight, Representative Matsumoto. I know she's online, hopefully. Here she is. Go ahead, Lauren.
Hi, and good evening to everybody. Sorry I'm not able to be with you, a little under the weather, but I did send my, uh, my report digitally and so we have a lot of updates for community. So for those of you who are ever able to make it to the Mililani Homecoming Parade, um, had a great time dressed up as Joy from Inside Out and made a big float and had my kids and friends along, uh, with us. And so those pictures are in the report. Uh, I also got to talk to students at Mililani EK Elementary about civics to the third graders. Um, and I did want to put on your calendars. We're also participating in the Mililani YMCA Trunker Treat. That's going to be on October twenty-sixth from four thirty to seven thirty PM, um, at the Mililani YMCA. Um, so those are the quick community events. I did want to talk about, on a more serious note, there's been a lot of calls to our office about the condo insurance crisis. Um, I just was in a meeting right before this with the residents at Kapanoi because they are considered, um, they're CPR'd with their area even though they are a single-family dwelling. And so there's a lot of those in the community that are really facing some difficult times with the condo insurance issue. Um, so if you go to repmatsumoto.com, there's going to be a pop-up. Um, and we've made a specific page for this issue because we've gotten so many phone calls over the last few months. And so there, that's a resource. As things come up out of the, um, the governor's office, because they have their task force in the governor's office, as we get more updates, we continue to put them all on that site. So it's kind of a one-stop shop for people who, um, have issues with the condo insurance. Um, I also do want to update you all on, because we had questions last time, on the Mililani Malka Emergency Road. So I was able to talk with Robin from DOT today. Um, and so they're continuing on with the project and so they've been talking with the city. And so John from DTS, uh, discussed that it's the same path that we had showed you earlier, but they're also considering making it a twenty-four-seven bus-only exit from the Park and Ride. Um, so maybe a little bit different of a plan of the, the gate that we were originally talking about, that it's only used for emergency exits. Um, but a twenty-four-seven bus route that hasn't been finalized yet. Um, so going to have more updates for you all on the October meeting. Uh, but that was just shared with me today about the bus routes. And so if you do have any questions that I can take back, um, to both DTS and DOT, happy to do that. But from the, the report that we got, the project is continuing on. Um, as, as scheduled, but is still in the planning phase. And with that, I'm going to end my report there because I'm sure there'll be a few questions.
All right, thank you, Lauren. Any questions for Representative Matsumoto?
Chair.
Go ahead.
Lauren, Stephen Melendez here. Thank you for your report. Um, I know there's consternation within the homeowners associations for the condominiums, but I also know that the governor released, or actually has in queue, three hundred million to help float insurance for now. How is that being allocated to the individual, um, condominium owners associations? Or is that being, how is that going to be helping the current insurance dilemma that they're facing?
From what I understand is they're still working to stand up, um, because they have to hire staff. There's, for the administration of everything, so they haven't gotten to that point yet. Uh, from the meetings that I've been involved in, unfortunately, a lot of these associations are having to pay by October. Um, I don't know if the governors, um, the task force and the current plan they have to stand that up is going to happen before October. Um, so that's kind of the interesting rub that we have right now. So again, as soon as we're getting information, we're putting it up on the website, uh, to help people out there. Um, but I think it's going to be, from what I've heard, a little bit longer of a process and isn't going to be stood up as quickly as I think we were originally hoping.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question for Representative Matsumoto.
Chair, um, I wanted to go back to the, um, emergency road and allowing it to be used for the bus twenty-four-seven, which is, makes a lot of sense. What I'd like to make sure that is being looked at is how are we preventing non-bus vehicles from entering and/or bicyclists and/or people on foot, um, from utilizing that entry point? So I just want that to be part of their conversations and the prevention of others to use that. I mean, look at right now on H, well, by the airport, it's a bus-only far-left lane and I always see cars getting in that lane. Um, so that, I just want that to be on the table and the, the, the conversation, because it is a good idea to have that available uh, for the bus itself, but, uh, everything else in between, I just want to make sure it's talked about. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make sure to report that back.
Okay, any other question? Anyone online?
Yeah, so, uh, Lauren, so when they come up with the plan, I'm assuming DTS knows it has to move the dog park?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, okay, we gotta, we gotta move that someplace else. Come on. All right.
And.
Just checking.
I don't know, I don't know at one point if, if it might be, uh, beneficial to have DTS and DOT come out to give a presentation to the board. Um, um, and maybe, maybe it's after they've gotten to the planning phase, or I don't know if it's better to do it now while they're still in the planning phase. Uh, but that might be a, a suggestion I might make because wherever you would like to have that, but I think it, it might be helpful. Um, but they are making progress, so it depends how you want to, how you want to do them.
That's fine. I think it makes a difference if the city plans to use that road now for buses versus when it was just an emergency access road only. So we might have to look at possibly another place for the dog park. We don't think the dogs kind of want to be in buses, so.
Yeah, and there might be more clarification. When I was talking with DOT, I believe DTS is also looking for a potential to also have a bus route be going southbound. Um, so something that would be a bus twenty-four-seven bus, bus route going towards Wahihawa and another one going towards town. And so in the map, I'm going to be honest, I couldn't quite figure out how that would play out. Um, but we, I would, I'm going to be following up with DTS as to what that actually looks like, but that was part of, part of the conversation that I talked with, with DOT. And so it looks like it's, it's, it's growing. Um, but I will definitely get more clarification.
Okay. Yeah, you might want to ask them to come down. Start doing stuff. Okay, thank you, Lauren.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, uh, House District Forty-Six, Representative Russo, Amy, are you on?
I am. Aloha.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, so it's been a minute.
Good evening. So it's been a minute since we've talked. So I'll just do a review of some of the events that have been happening in the last month that I think community members might want to go back and take a look at. So August twenty-ninth, we had a Good Government Forum, really revisiting all of the recommendations from the Foley Commission, and we did it in partnership with Common Cause and the Director of Ethics Commission, Robert Harris. So that's online on Olelo Community Media, and then also on my Facebook page, if people want to revisit that conversation. We're going to be introducing legislation to, again, circle back to this conversation about how can we improve not only, you know, the legislative outcomes, like the, pass some legislation with respect to campaign finance, but also look at our rules of governing the House, and, you know, the Senate is also a separate conversation. On Sunday, September fifteenth, we had a forum on the state budget primer, and we did that in partnership with the Center for Budget and Policy and Governor Ege. That also was livestreamed on Olelo and is available on their Facebook site. This coming, not this coming, but Monday, September the thirtieth, we're going to have Councilmember Wire and myself are having a community forum on land use and affordable housing at Wahihua Elementary from six to seven thirty, and the intention behind that is to really understand the legislation that we passed this session and then look at the implications for the county. How might our county implement some of that legislation? What might it look like, and what would that look like for our communities? I just returned from the Wichi Conference, which is essentially the Western States Conference of Legislators who work on higher education and some of the really innovative strategies being adopted by many states, many Western states that improve retention and graduation rates. We need to introduce some legislation to do similar work, and then also looking at developing really robust systems of micro credentials that help with our workforce development. So that's really been what I've been up to, essentially. I'm trying to think of anything else. If there are any questions, I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Representative Russo's office? Anyone online? Thank you, Amy. And District Thirty-Seven, Representative Vachica.
Hello, good evening. Mililani Maoka Neighborhood Board Chair, Vice Chair. I've missed you all. I feel like I have emerged from, you know, what it was, but just happy to report we're still working on many issues, top of which is still the school bus issue. So we're waiting on two routes to be restored. One that goes through the Nob Hill area and one that's closest to the Mililani Middle School, which is, goes through the Mililani Maoka Park and Ride. With the State Department of Transportation, I've been working with them on the IRA funding that they got for charging and fueling, charging and fueling infrastructure grant. Basically, we're getting six EV charger, charging stations at Mililani Maoka Park and Ride. Four will be Level Three, which means you can charge your EV from twenty min, twenty minutes full charge to an hour. And then the city will be installing two additional chargers by the end of the year. Also working with them, they will be doing a bunch of improvements on Kamia Highway from Pohelani to Lani Kohana. They will be installing crosswalks and they will be putting a, yeah, the sidewalk from Lani Kohana to Meheula. So some of the missing infrastructure there, that's also going to begin at the end of the year. And then we worked on just the bulk. There was illegal dumping that was happening by Kipapa Gulch by the gate. There was like a post gate, US Army Garrison Hawaii Properties, so worked with, again, Department of Transportation to do that, so about three truckloads that we collected of mattresses and a lot of construction items. It looked like somebody had just dumped some couches and then all their, like, renovation stuff. So please do not, please keep our community safe and clean. We had a big graffiti cleanup this past weekend, right after the Mililani Homecoming Parade, so our family dressed up as the minions. My husband was crew from Distickable Me, so it was a lot of fun, but we headed straight to the afternoon Waipu Gentry. We did graffiti cleanup from Ka'uka Boulevard to Waipu'uka, so that whole section, there was a lot of, lot of graffiti. We're planning our next one the first week of December, so let me know if you're very interested. It's a ton of fun and you get to meet your neighbors, and we had some of the Mililani neighborhood, I mean, neighborhood security watches that was participated in that one too. And then, what else? I did attend a new exciting event. Mililani Middle School will be starting their sex, preventing sex violence curriculum with their sixth through eighth graders. So they had a big parent meeting this past Wednesday just to talk about how to recognize the signs with everything happening on your phone and online and how we can watch out for not just predators online, but also the type of relationships that you wouldn't know, you know, adjust them from, you know, trusted relationship and it could have evolved into something. So that's, they're, they're starting at this year. And then finally, I do have an answer for the AMI question. So forty percent, we're going to get a full briefing, I believe, soon on the project. At least I know the area legislators are, and might be able to answer more questions in the next meeting, but about forty percent of the hundred nine units will be for those six, affordable housing units, sixty percent AMI. So that's about sixty thousand dollars for an individual, to about a hundred ten thousand for a family of four. And then sixty percent of those units will be for the gap group. So those like who've been in teaching much longer, have a family, so that's up to one hundred twenty AMI. So that's from like, about, you know, a hundred ninety thousand for a single individual to about a hundred twenty, a hun, you know, twenty, hundred thirty thousand for. Any questions?
That was regarding the teachers.
The teacher housing, Mililani Middle, uh, High School.
And my, my only point was, yeah, to get the AMI part and affordable affordability part.
Yeah.
You know, DOE is having such a hard time in retaining and recruiting teachers and rural. But this is an opportunity, I think, to use the housing as a possible incentive for them. I mean, they still have to drive, but I guess they have a place to drive.
Well, I look forward to working with you and hopefully continued support for these kinds of projects. As you know, it's always very difficult to get through much-needed housing in our various neighborhoods, so we look forward to, yeah, any type of support for very specific, yeah, target market that is much needed.
Good. Any questions for Representative Vachica? Yeah, go ahead, Teresa.
Um, thank you for bringing up school buses. A question had come up, I guess because folks were like, why do we have tour buses? Are we have tourists going on? Why are the tourists in our neighborhood? Why, why, why are they coming by Safeway? So I did clarify for them, those are the school buses that are being utilized, they are contracted. Then the conversation, well, they don't have red flashing lights and stop signs. How do we, as residents, how would we know that kids are getting on and off those buses if we don't know that they're school buses? So I'm wondering if there's any conversation on having signage on the exterior being put on temporarily or a big old sticker or magnet that says "school bus", so that people who aren't in the know, don't have school-aged children, don't realize what's going on around them, will know that someone may be disembarking and run across the street. Because you don't have to stop for the tour bus, you can go right around the tour bus. And I think that it's such a slippery slope when we're putting littles on the buses, and maybe we're not doing elementary, maybe we should just do high school and use those, and the, and the school buses should be meant for elementary, middle school. Yeah, that, that, that conversation was had. I'm like, yeah, we got a meeting next week. I'll bring it up. But yeah, that, that was kind of a concern of, especially in our area where tour buses aren't the norm. And so, yeah, that, I think that's an important conversation for them to have.
So if you do see those Polynesian buses, they are our school buses. I do have to say that students love the tour buses. Do you know how many complaints the DOE have had on rowdiness, disruption, and complaints zero on the tour buses? So, but it is, we did raise that, so the, the DOE is working on signage, some visible mark, temporary markings, but to help with that, because they, yeah, they don't have those installed, but it is part of that.
Mr. Mr. Chair?
Yeah, once, once Teresa brought that up, I got to say, about two weeks ago, I was stunned to see that white Polynesian whatever bus coming up down. I'm like, what the hell are they coming up here for? I mean, what is there, what are they looking for? And then I saw him again yesterday, and it's like, no, they were being used for school buses, but Teresa brings up a good, a good, a good point. Now that I know what they're actually being used for, and I think they're going up to the Mililani Maoka Elementary. I don't think they're going to the, they didn't seem to be going to the middle school.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure. Yeah, but I'm, yeah, a bunch of them are dropping off at the middle, but they must be part of the route.
What in the devil are they doing up here?
Yeah, oh, definitely. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Anyone online? Okay, thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
Moving on to approval of our board minutes for the, our August twentieth, twenty-four board meeting. Any comments or correction? Anyone online? Hearing none of any objections to adopting the minutes for August twentieth, twenty-four. Hearing no objections, any objections? Seeing none of the minutes are adopted. Moving on to reports, PACT teaming Central Wahoian Park.
No report.
Report. Moving on to committees. Education, Stephen?
Yes, thank you. Anna, would you like to go first?
Um, I report. Okay, I'm reporting on four schools, and the first one's Mililani EK Elementary. They announced that the DOE is doing attendance improvement, attendance improvement campaign. And through the month of September, the EK Elementary School Student Council and the CPO members will be sign-waving to raise awareness, to promote good attendance at their school. Last year, Mililani EK had twenty percent of their students in chronic absence range, which is fifteen or more absences. Prior to COVID, it was only five, and current student absence, of course, statewide is really up there. They're also announcing collection of Institute of Human Services. They're collecting and accepting items such as non-perishable foods, toiletries, household cleaning supplies. Donation can be dropped off at their office by Wednesday, October second. And Mililani Maoka Elementary School, this school, is having their annual Fall Fair on Friday, October fourth, and this is a free school event, and they include food trucks, crafts, artisan vendors, free games, and activities for keiki. And there is a number that they can go to Lori Chakahi, eight oh eight, three oh five, one seven eight one, if they're interested in, anyone's interested in being a vendor. And I did happen to look at the Lahua High School website, and they have a Take Action for Suicide Awareness Month, so that's really important. And during lunchtime, the students may pledge their name and fill the board to show their support for suicide prevention. And just as Willa Middle School, they are ongoing fundraiser at Wahihua Papa John's Pizza, and you could help by saving your labels and sending them to the Willer School, Little, Wheeler Middle School. That's my report.
Hey, Stephen, go ahead.
Thank you. Can we share the visual? There you go. Thank you so much. I'll be sharing for the Mililani Middle School, the education share report. In the center, I don't know if you can see, it's, it's Spirit Week as of September thirtieth to October four for the students. September thirty is Music Monday. This is all geared towards dress. Students may dress as their favorite band artist. October one is Duo Tuesday. Dress up with a friend. October second was teacher versus students, which is, for Spirit Week, they have fun. The teachers versus the students dressing up, and they have color wars on October third. Each grade level is assigned a color to wear. Green is sixth grade, orange is ninth, seventh party, purple is eighth. A sports day is October seventh, and that's where they can wear a sports dress. Also, I wanted to share that their, the middle school is also accepting donations for Institute for Human Services, IHS. So food donations may be dropped off at the administration front office. Also, as Tricia shared, really interesting in preventing sexual violence for, there was a, a meeting for this, for the teachers and the students this week concerning violence to avert that and mitigate that for the students. The last items I have on the bottom of page one is that they, we do have thirty-two high-interest programs, and I encourage the students to go and attend, to make new friends and memories. Their, their classes are great. They're all after-school, zero cost to the students. It's really great because the teachers donate their time. When I was fundraising chair, we used, we raised funds so that a week provide materials to all the teachers, and it was successful. The programs include dance, astronomy, computers, robotics, yearbook, sports, great, great opportunities. The schedule is in the admin office, and also the administration main conference room is open on the second Tuesdays for any parents to attend, to attend these school community council meetings at six o'clock. As you know, the SEC takes care of the academic and the financial plan, reports to the Board of Education. And also the PTSO also meets on the second Tuesday, five P M. in the, the main administration building in front, in their conference room. And I also attached the schedule on page two. On page two, we just had, on September sixteen, we had the waiver day. Looking forward to October. October four is the end of the first quarter. And then for the students and the parents, October seven through eleven is Fall Break, no school. And then October seven is no students, and that's my report. Thank you. Any questions?
Do you, uh, military, civil defense?
No report.
Any permitting zoning? Your Stanton. Transportation. The board now has a representative from the Department of Transportation, Casey Avi. So Casey, do you have a report for us?
Yes, I do. Let me share my screen here. Okay, can you see the screen, Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Hazama and members of the Mililani Maoka, La Ni Bali Neighborhood Board. My name is Casey Avi, and I'm from the State DOT Highlands Division, and I'll be your new DOT representative. On September eleventh, I received an email from Aaron Wilson from Councilmember Okimoo's office with a concern about, from constituent Jeanette Wilson about overboard behind taps and apps along Mahuli Parkway. Working with our Waho district office, the landscaping crew was able to cut back the overboard when I did my field inspection last Friday on September thirteenth. Also during my field inspection, I noticed that there was a graffiti on the traffic signal controller box on Mililani Town Off-Ramp. I worked with our Waho district maintenance crew on painting over the graffiti. And finally, on the front page of our June twenty-first star advertiser, the State DOT settled a lawsuit called Navahini versus State DOT with a group of young plaintiffs, many of them high school students, who accuse the State DOT of not doing enough to address the greenhouse gas emissions that is causing climate change and will ruin their future livelihoods and their right to a clean and healthy environment. The lawsuit was filed back on June first, twenty twenty-two. The settlement affirmed that the DOT commitment to implement transformative changes in the Hawaii transportation system with the goal of achieving, achieving net zero emissions by twenty forty-five across all transportation modes. The group of Hawaii plaintiffs with support from our Children's Trust and Earth Justice claimed that the state's per capita greenhouse emissions from Hawaii's transportation sector are rising and anticipate to make up nearly sixty percent of the state's greenhouse gas emissions by twenty thirty. Some of the requirements the State DOT will be implementing as part of the settlement agreement are the HDOT will create a greenhouse gas reduction plan showing how Hawaii's transportation system will become more environmentally friendly over the next twenty years. The plan will include five-year benchmarks and performance metrics for twenty-four years, twenty, thirty, thirty-five, forty, and forty-five. These five-year interim These five-year interim targets include reducing vehicles' mile travel, reducing the number of single occupancy vehicles, expand multimodal transportation options such as public transit, pedestrian sidewalks and bike lanes, adding more public charging stations for electric vehicles and increase the use of zero carbon alternative fuel like hydrogen for ground, air and marine transportation. HDOT will be incorporating the complete street policy. HDOT will produce an annual report compiling the individual projects and detailing its progress in reducing the greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled. HDOT will plant at least 1,000 trees every year to help draw down the carbon in the atmosphere whenever feasible and plant native trees and shrubs. That, and HDOT will develop and implement a program for public education outreach and community engagement to support a greenhouse gas reduction plan. Additional information will be provided at future Neighborhood Board meetings. We hope to partner with the Neighborhood Board, Boards and our elected officials on successfully implementing this multi-year settlement. This concludes my report. If board members or elected officials have any concerns about the state highways, they can email me. Possible attaching the photos or Google map location of the concern will be very helpful. I can take any question at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Casey. Any questions for the Department of Transportation?
Sure, have a question.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. I'm Stephen Melendez. I have a question for you, Casey. Are you coordinating with the Wahoo MPO?
The Wahoo MPO?
Metropolitan Planning Organization.
That's, that's under the city and we, we normally work with them and they normally approve most of the projects on our STIP. And then it goes on to our, our STIP. So yes, MPO, all MPO is coordinated with us on federal aid projects.
Great, yeah, they're 80% funded by, by the feds, 20% by the state. Yeah, I advised with them on the 2040 plan. Currently, they're working on the 2050 plan. That was not in your port, so are you also addressing that?
Uh, can you say that again?
They're, they're currently working on the 2050 plan?
Yes. So yes, they use funds on that for the 2050 plan. So we provide them the funds and they work on their plans and produce the plans.
Thank you.
Um, it's really exciting to hear about the initiatives, you know, planting native trees and plants and planting more trees and things of that nature. Unfortunately, it has been our experience that the city hasn't been very good choosers of trees. Hence all of the projects to remove sidewalks and take up roots and repave the roads and dig up roots. What almost seems annually. I think it would behoove whatever committee is going to be looking at this new initiative that they actually bring on an arborist or someone who can counsel what would be appropriate to the areas that they will be putting trees into, especially if it's a long roadways, fence lines, things of that nature. Thank you.
Yes, sure. The key part for that is that we have to work with the Neighborhood Boards and elected officials on these projects moving forward.
Any other? Casey, nice to meet you, Casey, and I'll figure out a place to put you on the, on the show.
Answer Teresa's question about the tree. So it's not really a state DOT issue, it's more a city DTS issue. The people that approve the planning of the trees along the streets and roads is actually the Department of Planning and Perme. Was totally not connected with any of the other departments, which is kind of an interesting situation where the counties to figure out like how to get this thing straight. But that is, that has been one of the challenges, I think. They're supposed to have come up with, I think Alice had a copy of it too, of some trees that they thought were not going to be as invasive as some of them that they've approved in the past. But I think the county's got to get together between the different department jurisdictions and figure out like how to get this thing right.
All right, moving on to recognition and awards, Alice. Till next month, right? Okay. All right, anybody have any announcements? Hearing none, the next, our next Neighborhood Board meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 15th at 7:00 PM at this location, Mililani Moka Elementary School and Bio Webex. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.